Welcome to the Situate Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, August 12th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our first item is a public hearing, accessory dwelling, special permit. Okay. I'll read the aforementioned. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 9 and 11, and with Situate Zoning Bylaw, Section 530, Accessory Dwelling Special Permit, and Section 940 referrals, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Thursday, August 12th, 2021, in the Selectman's Hearing Room at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant Arty Johansson and Kristen Collins, and owners Arthur and Barbara Johansson. How do you, is that how you pronounce it?
Johansson.
Johansson. For an accessory dwelling special permit within a single-family dwelling at property located at 8J Road, Situate. Property as shown on Accessor's map, block parcel 34-20-15. Plans are available for review in the Planning Office, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Welcome. Come forward.
Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Read everything. Okay. So.
Back to the room.
Speak to us. Identify yourselves and tell us what you plan to do.
So, I am Kristen Collins. I'm Arty and Barbara's daughter. And I am, our plan is for me to move into my parents' home, my childhood home, and put this ADU on for them.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're my apartment.
I'm Jason Beal, I'm the architect.
The architect. All right. So, do you have, for this new dwelling, attachment, whatever, do you have a way in and a way out? I mean, two entrance egress type of thing?
To the?
To the?
The ADU.
The accessory dwelling, yeah.
Yes. To the accessory dwelling?
Ah, yes. There's an entrance in the back. There's a separate entrance in the back.
And where's the other entrance?
We originally were gonna put an entrance in between the two, so you can egress through the existing house. But actually, we used the front glass doors.
Where is that part of it?
What should we look at? A-12? Is A-12 the floor plan?
Uh, A-2, A-3.
What number is this street?
A-12.
The floor plan is A-12.
A-12, five. Yep. Look at A-12.
So, next to refrigerator, we're gonna put a door in there, so you can enter through, what is the, it's marked rear entry. There was discussion whether or not we were gonna keep it originally completely separated, or whether we're allowed to conjoin the two.
Mm-mm.
So, are we allowed to have the, if we want to be in the separate?
I think there should be another egress.
They do have one on the second floor.
They do?
They have a second floor.
There's a.
Door that goes to the balcony.
Oh, yeah. But how do you get off the balcony?
Yeah.
Jump?
You can't get off the balcony.
I don't think you'll have.
As long as it meets the state building code.
It's a fire code. Don't we need it for the fire code?
As long as it meets state building code, then, I mean, they'll have to check with the building inspector on that.
Yeah, I don't think an enclosed balcony.
No.
Meets the needs of a second means of egress, though.
You can add something full upstairs to that.
Well, actually, if the truth be told, I really would like to see another exit on the main.
The main floor.
Yes, on the first floor.
That's fine. We can put it in the window that faces the street.
There you go. I just think, I like to know where I'm going and how I'm gonna get there.
Yep.
And out.
And out.
Okay.
We need to know how to get out. And going upstairs, something going on downstairs, doesn't work. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, where are you, where are you gonna locate it? By the fridge?
So, this is the street. So, he's gonna put one.
Oh, off of that way. Off of that way. Okay.
So, where is it gonna go, Kristen?
You're gonna have it go?
This is the one that's over here.
Yeah, the three.
All right. So, this here is the street.
Right.
Side, so one of these windows, we'll just take out, maybe the center one, and put the door in there.
You know what? Do it right here. Otherwise, traffic flow, it's not gonna work.
Okay.
Sorry, but it's just not gonna work. Because then you end up with a glorified hallway, and you don't need that.
True.
In this small space.
Good point.
Small space, yeah.
All right. So, that would be one of the conditions, Karen? All right. I'll open it up to the board.
Oh, can you come back?
Well, I guess the question that I had, so this is, it is an accessory dwelling, but there are shared, this is more for the board. What's the difference between like an accessory dwelling and just an addition that you put a stove in a, you know, another stove, or like another kitchen, or a bathroom?
We don't do that.
We don't do that.
We don't do that.
We're not supposed to do that. It's a no-no.
That answered my question. Thank you.
Well, there you go. Are you all set?
Oh, yeah.
Ben?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Patty?
I'm all set. No, thank you.
Steven? You must have, I know you do. Come on.
Yeah, I always have questions. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see this plan before, so.
Give him a minute.
They could just showed up, right?
Yep.
I guess we talked about lighting outside, right?
Yeah, lighting. What are you doing for lighting?
Over the doorway.
Well.
Warm lighting, I'm sorry, I didn't think any.
Well, we just need to make sure that you don't have the lighting spilling over into the neighbors, or any of that.
Downlighting.
Downlighting.
Yeah, I mean, if you do downlight over the, underneath the deck, it goes straight down.
And your parking is where?
The turn driveway. The turn driveway is long enough to have four cars in front of that.
Well, that can be a real pain.
We discussed that it is their property.
Yeah.
That's their decision.
All right.
Yeah, it's my, my parents and I. It's not my mom watching the kids.
They do have a triple lot, so they have a room over the right, so they can park.
All right.
Currently, they park on the left side.
It's just my parents.
Okay.
Or you take whatever car's in the back.
Yeah.
Just leave the keys out. Yeah.
All right.
Same family living in both of them, so.
So, just in terms of the architecture here, is, I can't really tell, is the addition and the existing house, is the siding, siding on the house the same? So, it, it all blends in?
It will look like. An addition will all look like the same house.
It'll look like the same. That's, that's what I'm asking about.
It's the same, it's the same siding details.
Okay.
It was just clavering. I just put the side view in, just to differentiate the two, so you can see what was new and what was added.
So is the.
But it's all clavered?
Correct.
This one is a separate sewer connection? Yes, you need a separate sewer connection.
Okay.
You better talk to the, for the sewer department.
I already gave them the comments. I sent, I sent the comments.
Yeah, I saw the comments.
We have a comment, so they have to, they have to pay, uh.
Eight thousand?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars, right.
Yep. And what is the addition, as tall as the house itself, or taller?
It's not any taller.
It's not any taller. The roof ones are the same height.
The same height? Okay.
We're checking, we're checking.
Okay. I see that. Yes. Yes, yes. Well, good luck with construction.
Not very good timing.
They say prices coming down.
No. Close prices almost.
So, overall, is this a, this is a connected town sewer?
Yes.
Current.
Okay. And overall, you're still gonna end up with four bedrooms, and they're, but one of them's in the accessory dwelling?
Yes.
Okay. So, that storage room?
You can't swing a canton at it, so small. Seven by seven?
Seven by seven. But that's, that will never be a bedroom.
No. No, there's very little storage in the house, so I'm gonna use that, basically.
Okay.
New closet?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. All right, Karen, do you have anything you wanna say?
No, it meets the size requirements. It's 749 gross square feet. So, technically, it meets the size requirement. They are, they are sharing a couple spaces. They're sharing the laundry. That's, that's all they're sharing.
Well, it beats going to the laundromat.
And, right, exactly. And they're adding a breakfast nook on to the, onto the primary dwelling.
Okay.
So, it looks like it'll all conform.
Do you have any questions for us? And please don't let anybody talk on the street. Very important.
So, that's a condition.
I know, but it's not always adhered to.
It's summertime.
It's summertime. All right. Are we all set, people? We can move forward? No?
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
I don't have any more questions.
All right. I move to make the following findings, that. One, on June 30th, 2021, Arty Johansson and Kristen Collins applied for a special permit for an attached accessory dwelling on the property at 8J Road. Two, according to the town's Situate Accessors records and the deed, the property at 8J Road is owned by Arthur J. Johansson Jr. and Barbara C. Johansson as trustees of the Johansson Revocable Trust. Three, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately 749 gross square feet and 653 net square feet. The application indicates that this is 62% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, which is 2,283 square feet. According to the applicant, which includes 855 square foot addition and does not include the 749 square foot accessory dwelling, the proposed square footage of the house will be 2,987 square feet. The Accessor's card indicates the net square footage of the existing home to be 1,383 square feet. This meets the size requirements of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings, as the bylaw allows 750 square feet, or 40% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single-family home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete, separate housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential R3 zoning district. The proposed attached accessory dwelling structure meets all the required setbacks, building height, and yard requirements for primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling within a single-family home is proposed to be in a two-story addition located to the west side of the existing dwelling. Access will be via a new door with stairs to the rear of the, the accessory dwelling, and through a balcony on the second floor. We have to change that.
Right.
Okay? And a stair, a door.
In the kitchen.
In the kitchen, you know, around the kitchen, somewhere. Karen, you can figure out the wording.
Replace a window.
Replace a window with a door. The appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Seven, the site plan for accessory dwelling for 8J Road, Situate, Mass., dated 6/28/21 by Morse Engineering Company, Inc., shows the location of the house with the proposed accessory dwelling addition and driveway. The plan shows there will be four parking spaces in the driveway. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling, although car shuffling will be required. Ample parking appears to be provided. Eight, the owners have submitted a signed notarized statement that they will both be occupying the proposed accessory dwelling at 8J Road. Nine, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by Town Water and Sewer. DPW requirements for water and sewer connections will be met. Ten, the application meets the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at 8J Road with the following conditions. In addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the Planning Board after public hearing, 12/17/15. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform to architectural plans by Jason E. Beal, AIA Architect for additions to the residence of Johansson, 8J Road, Situate, Mass., dated 6/28/21, consisting 18 plan sheets of A2 through A19 ADU permit sets showing existing floor plans and elevations, and proposed floor plans and elevations. Site plan, site plan for accessory dwelling, 8J Road, Situate, Mass., dated 6/28/21, prepared by Morse Engineering Company, Inc. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the Planning Board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that they are living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1st yearly. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, Zoning Board of Appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. The accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Seven, the sewer must meet all requirements of the DPW.
Sewer.
Division, including an $8,000 connection fee to be paid. Eight, the water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW water division for the accessory dwelling. Nine, any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on abutting properties. Ten, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, excuse me, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state, and federal holidays. Instruction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Eleven, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Twelve, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk socks shall be used as necessary. Is there a second?
So, wait a minute. You wanted to add another condition.
Okay, what was the?
You wanted to add, a second means of egress shall be added on the first floor in the kitchen by replacing a window with a door. You wanted to add that as a condition.
Yes, please. I'll entertain a second as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Please control your water.
Yes.
Keep it on. Control your runoff.
So, Karen, you said a second means of egress shall be added?
On the, on the first floor in the kitchen by replacing a window with a door.
Okay.
Thank you.
Or is, or is otherwise approved by the building department?
Well, I think they know where it's gonna go.
Just in case, in case they have a different view on what a second means of egress should be.
You know where it's supposed to be, regardless of what.
Or is otherwise approved by the planning department, or, or by the building commissioner?
Us.
Okay. Trust no one, suspect them all. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's you, Hannah. Thank you very much. I wish you luck.
All right, so I'll file, we'll get the decision filed, and there's a 20-day appeal period, then you can come and pick up a copy. I'll try to send you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
70% of the original dwelling. I just didn't want them to.
Tell Karen, she'll fix it.
What?
What's that?
What is it, Bob?
So, the, the application, it says it's, in number three, it says the application indicates that this is 62% of the total square footage.
32.
It says it's 32, so just.
Are they, the?
32%.
Okay, the application says 62.
Can't be 62, right?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
I'll change it.
All right. Oh, my God, we're on time. We have a Form A, 39 and 45 Penfield Road. Hello.
Hello. My name is Jeff Hassett, civil engineer with Morse Engineering. We're on the app with the property owners of 39 and 45 Penfield Road. Our plan to reconfigure the lot line between the two properties. To give you the backstory, we did a thorough layup of the property at 45 to do a septic repair, and we found that the existing house, we drove into the setback, the property line. So, the neighbors have agreed to do a land swap. It's an ADU swap in the area, so it has no impact on the land area, and it's towards the back of the property, so it has no impact on the frontage.
I hate when that happens. Really?
How does that happen?
Yeah, how does that happen?
What's that?
That.
Precious man?
Yeah. How does that happen?
I don't know.
Put a house up.
Well, actually, the, the line of occupation goes more similar to where we're proposing the line. So, and I think it was an addition, from what I was told, 40 or 50 years ago, and they had a survey, and they did, and they assumed that was the property line.
This is part of the children farm.
It is?
Yeah, this is originally children property.
I thought Penfield was over off of Elm Street.
It is, but it, it was part of Nathaniel Children's Farm, a thousand years ago.
Thousand years ago.
How much I know.
All right, Karen.
Um, it has frontage. Technically, I guess it has access, although there's no driveway to the house. That was a little peculiar, but technically, it has frontage and access, and the plan should be endorsed.
Why is there no driveway?
Why is there no driveway?
I don't know, but when I.
How do they get to it?
How do you get in the house?
There is a front door and everything.
Huh?
Has a door.
Does it have a driveway?
The picture I sent you guys the other day shows no driveway.
No driveway, yeah.
Okay.
Worse access only?
All right.
But it's all flat, so there's no, there's nothing to impede access or anything, so I, I think you have to say it has access and frontage.
Okay. All right. I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land in Situate, Mass., 39 Penfield Road, and 45 Penfield Road, Accessor's parcels 44-2-6N and 44-2-6M, stamped by Jason Scott, PLS of Morse Engineering Company, Inc., for applicants Joseph Spinella and owner Kristen Spinella and Harold Messis. Junior, and John C. and Linda J. Melville, trustees of the Melville Family Living Trust, dated July 13th, 2021, as the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance or change in lot line, which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the Situate zoning bylaw. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have six McDonald Terrace.
No. No, we have 485 Countryway.
Sorry. Residential compound development, 485 Countryway. Close, but no surprise. So, what are we doing, gentlemen?
Good evening.
Would you please identify yourself?
Kevin Grady from Grady Consulting, along with Andy, Andy Nader. I brought a couple extra plans if you might have.
I tried to look at it online, but it was very difficult to read.
I have only printed three, but they're.
We can share.
Yeah, I'll share.
You wanted to stay.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Steve.
I think so.
All right.
So, again, Kevin Grady.
Yep.
We permitted the residential compound development with you over the last few years for Brad Merritt. We're in the construction phase currently, and during construction, we've encountered a couple of items that we thought required change, minor modification, construction approval from the Planning Board. So, we've, that's why we're here, sent emails and set up the meeting. So, basically, four minor items we'd like to talk about. The first one that came up is the water line. The water department, when we were working with them, indicated that they did not require a looped water main. So, what they required was a single main with a hydrant at the end, and that the residential water services be also located at the end, and that the hydrant, you know, basically has as a, a blowout location, and the water services keep the water moving through the water main, so there's no dead end. So, it basically cuts the construction cost of the water main in half, and as they said, it wasn't required. So, we're requesting a modification to what's shown on the plan there, a single eight-inch ductile iron line, as shown. We've also added a hydrant at the front corner per the request of the fire department.
So, the hydrant wasn't there?
Yeah, we, we only have one hydrant on the approved plans, so we're gonna install a second one.
So, why did the water department change their mind?
Well, because they feel, they're changing their philosophies on some of these internal looped water lines. They're thinking that it's more places for things to go wrong, and it doesn't, so more, more break, break points for, at the connections, and they don't feel that it creates any difference in water quality. You see, you have the hydrant at the end, which you'll be able to flush.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to jive with what I thought we were originally told about looped water mains, which.
Well, this is what.
Were multiple components to it. It's not just about.
Well, this is what I've been told. They've had a change in philosophy on little ones, little projects like this, and so.
So, does it have to do with how long the main is?
It, it could. They didn't tell me that. I mean, I, they told me it's because of the connection points, and because it doesn't really do much for the water quality. And so, I ran it by, I ran it by fire. I ran it by, I talked to the water guy when he came in to tell me, I said, "You can't make a change in the field without running it by the Planning Board." And they said they, they're having this internal philosophy change.
Isn't that wonderful? And I am so glad that we knew that.
And so I said, "That's why it's really important for you to comment during the permitting phase of a project." So they understand that now, but this is what the water department wants out there. And fire concurs because they want the second hydrant out in front. That way, they don't have to go, if there's a fire, say, at the first house, they don't have to go by the fire to get to the hydrant at the end.
Yeah, but now they're going to have to come in and flush this main.
Right.
Periodically. And that's not the homeowner's work, that's the town's work.
Right, correct.
On top of that, if there's a break somewhere, then particularly sort of at the beginning, then none of those homeowners are getting water until the break's fixed. Whereas if they were looped it, they could isolate it and still supply water.
I understand, but this is what I've been told. And I gave you all the information that I got, I mean, I gave you a lot of information because I checked with everybody. And this is what they say they want.
Yeah, but they didn't really explain it. They just said this is what they want, right?
But also too, this is a private and perpetuity road.
This is private and perpetuity.
The water main's not private.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this doesn't really-
This is what I was told they wanted.
Yes, I'm not sold on this unless I hear somebody articulate a much grander policy than this is what we want. Because we've been requiring looped water mains in all these subdivisions since I've been here. So suddenly something's changed, and I don't understand why. And maybe they're saying there's a length that makes a difference, but nobody's articulated that. And I guess I'm just not ready to say yes to that. I'd like to hear from the water department on that.
The water people come and talk to us?
Yeah, really.
I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me.
It doesn't make sense to me either. We've always looped in subdivisions.
I mean, they were trying to get away from dead end lines by having any subdivisions loop the water lines, right? If something's changed, I think the water department should come in and articulate that.
I'll ask, I mean, I gave you the memo, the email from the water department, that's what I got.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, it's just not enough.
I'll tell them it's not enough.
Also too, 105 Hamley Road is the last residential compound district that we have done? Karen?
Yes.
Was that water looped?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I would have to go and look. I don't remember.
This request didn't originate from the management team, my contractors, anyone? This was the water department.
I understand that. We know.
They came to us and said, "We no longer want what we had requested previously."
We know, we know that, and we know it isn't you.
Yeah, we need to hear from the water department, because we've been requiring this all along.
The water department has provided comments, so my concern now is the work on my construction phase. Because we initiated this about three weeks ago and set the agenda, set to be on the agenda for today. This could delay my project, I'd like to avoid that. This was a request we could be creating.
There is a shut off to isolate the entire water main to, if there is a break, to protect the waters of, you know, town waters in the main out in Country Way. They did ask that we locate the water services at the end, which basically keeps the water moving, there's no dead areas. And as Karen indicated, I guess their concern is that when you add the duplicate line, you're also adding duplicate potential failure points. Because you're doubling your fixtures, your thrust blocks. I understand what you were saying too, that you can isolate it. But you isolate it, you're going to fix it anyway? You're still going to get down and do the same amount of work.
No, but I'm just saying, the rationale for looping these lines, I've heard it before. And it wasn't just, oh, we want it or we don't want it. There was supposed to be a rationale for it. And I don't feel like anybody's sort of articulated why suddenly we're changing policy. And if they have, they have a criteria, I mean, if it's, this thing's probably 500 feet long, right?
Yeah, the road's 460 feet.
Right, so it's like 500 feet long. Is it because it's that, you know, not longer than that? Or is it because, you know, it's not 20 houses, it's however many this is, three or four?
Five.
Five, right? I don't know, I don't feel like we really understand why they're changing it.
All right, I can ask them for a more detailed response, that it didn't fly.
And it's all, but on the other side of it, do we really have, and it's not the applicant's fault. It's water. And so we're going to hold them up with construction because of some new philosophy from the water department, which doesn't strike me as quite fair.
Yeah, but it's-
That's life.
The original design was a looped water line.
Right.
That's what we approved, right?
Right, that's what you-
So somebody's, I mean, regardless of what the water department said, if you're coming back to change it, then I want to know why we're, particularly if you're saying this is a change in policy, why this is happening. It doesn't make any sense to me. Otherwise, we wouldn't have required it in the first place.
All I can do is ask.
Are you able to put this looped water line in?
It's designed to be put in, so-
I guess then?
I mean, the next time we can hear you, the next meeting is the 26th. Is the 26th really going to hold the project up that much?
It will in fact be quite about two weeks. We're already going to put the water, based on the water department's design and approval, we went ahead and tapped the line at the location that's originally shown. The location for the loop and the single line coming in is the same spot. But we would have had to tap the loop as well. I would have to super loop the loop, which we're going to have to cut open the road again to tap the water.
They want to take construction schedule to try and get this first phase done so they can get paved and closed for winter and meet the seeding season and then start working on foundations. And their timing is really good right now to accomplish and work in the good weather season.
It's basically Catch 22.
Yeah, I mean, it feels like we don't really have an option. We're painted into a corner. I think, regardless, I think the water department better get here and tell us why they changed everything.
Okay, I will ask for a memo detailing-
I don't want a memo, I'd like to see him here.
You want them here, okay.
Yeah, I want to talk to him about it.
And under the circumstances, because of this, and I know how you feel, Steve, but do we hold them up for another two weeks?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think we can.
That's not their fault.
I mean, I, well, it's partially your fault, because you should, if you're changing your planning approvals, you should come back here and ask, right? But at this point, it feels like the die is cast, right? And the water department's going to have to deal with this. And if they have to flush this thing every four weeks, they're going to have to do that. And I'm assuming they'd have to put, I mean, when they flush this thing, it's probably four or 500 gallons a minute, right? To flush a line like this? So it's not a little bit of water.
I don't think they're going to be flushing it that off, like-
Well, you're not going to have much flow in this thing. I mean, you're going to have five houses connected. You're not getting, you're not going to get three feet per second type velocities in this line, right? It's, you know, by the time you get out to the end, it might be a half a foot per second or less, right? And so if anything drops out, it's dropping out in this line, and they're going to have to flush it. But that's, they've already bought off on that at this point by saying this is what they want.
We'll ask them to come, but it's not, all right, what's your next item?
We're requesting to relocate the outlet from the outlet control structure and infiltration basin one. We're required to build a 15-foot access road around the back of the basin for maintenance purposes. So the pipe coming out of the outlet control structure created a grading issue over the access road. Would have had to been humped up to get over it. And this, that access road is super elevated back toward the basin to an infiltration trench. So it's creating a grading issue. So we'd like, what we proposed to do was add a manhole and turn the outlet, the outlet 90 degrees so that we no longer have to cross the access path. Can you see that in the drawing there?
No, could you point that out of here?
Right here?
Up right here.
Right there.
So it was proposed to go straight out. What we want to do, you can see across is the access path, and it crossed there. Based on the elevation, we had to pump that up to get over that. Instead, what we want to do is drop in a manhole, turn it 90 degrees to this location here. So now there's no grading issue there. It's actually located further from the wetlands. Any outflow from there would go into, to this line, this infiltration trench before spilling over. Actually, there's no overflow from that outlet control structure. It was serving as an emergency overflow. So it does not see water from the two 10, 25, or 100-year storms. It's actually set right at the 100-year level. So it really doesn't even see any water.
Promise?
What happens?
Promise?
What happens if you do have an overflow? Where does it go?
It flows right out as designed. It would hit that manhole and turn 90 degrees and hit that outlet control, the energy dissipator, the splash pad. And then it would just disperse down gradient toward the wetland. So that's an energy dissipator and it's a level spreader.
Okay, so it disperses that between the 62 and the 61 wood elevation?
Yes, so it would disperse basically across the gravel path, because that's the down gradient direction. And then it would go through the 50-foot, no disturb woodland bumper before reaching the wetland.
Okay, Steve?
I'm okay with it.
All right. Next.
The third is in the same location there, the outlet for that infiltration trench at the back of the drainage basin. See that long, narrow, hatched trench along the toe of the slope? So that was designed with a weir, a trapezoidal weir that looks like this. No real structure. The, that John, there's a red, there's a red, there's a red dot there basically. Between the contractors and meeting with John Chessy out there, what we'd like to do is just put in a concrete curb and cut it to this shape instead of just crushed stone outletting to daylight. So we just want to add a curb to give it a structure. So we're just going to cut it just like that.
All right. What did Mr. Chessy say about that? He was okay with that, wasn't he?
John was okay, yeah, John suggested it to make it easier for access and for maintenance.
And then the last item that we'd like to modify is the swale from the, so the runoff from the roadway goes to a catch basin, then to sediment fore bay, then it goes down a swale to the drainage infiltration basin number one. So this swale right here, water quality swale?
Yep.
I think of the terminology for a minute there, but water quality swale. Basically, the outlet pipe from the catch basin is at an elevation that would surcharge based on the proposed elevations. As you can see, there was a 62 elevation, then it went up to 63 and a half. We'd like to cut that back down to 62 so that we don't have any head backing up into the catch basin. So we basically want to cut a foot and a half at that end of the swale and meet grade back at the end of the swale. We're still going to plant it as a water quality swale. Water will still go through the plantings prior to getting to the infiltration basin portion of the system.
So essentially, there's no, you're flattening this thing out at a lower elevation.
Correct. And that will eliminate any head problems or backing up into the catch basin.
All right, Karen?
So John Chessy has reviewed the things, and he suggested these drainage modifications in some cases just to make it easier for the maintenance and it doesn't impact the functionality of the project.
Okay.
Okay.
Comments, any other comments? No?
I have a general question, but no comments on this.
All right, what's your general question?
I was just like in terms of an update on the project. You had mentioned you're trying to get foundations going, November, did you say? I forget what you said, but-
We can't get the foundations going until we complete phase one and get it approved by the board. As soon as that happens, we're actually, we're planning on getting you individual lot plans shortly. That will, so once phase one is done, they're ready to go.
That's kind of what I was asking.
Apparently, I'll be swimming with the building department, et cetera.
Right, right.
End of September-ish is the target for completion of this.
Okay, yeah, I was just checking on it, because I remember there was a condition.
They understand the requirement that the basins have to be stabilized and seeded prior to putting binder down and prior to doing the water testing that's required to go into phase two. It's, they're very clear on that.
Okay, both of you?
Yep.
Okay. I move to approve three minor modifications for the residential compound development currently known as 485 Countryway, being requested by Grady Consulting LLC in a letter dated July 30, 2021, and on sheet seven of 20 and 10 of 20, one, allowing the looped water line to be eliminated with the provision that a hydrant be installed in beginning of the drive and end of the drive. Two, modification of the infiltration trench outlet weir detailed by adding concrete curbing for accessibility. And three, modifying the basin, number one, discharge location to be 90 degrees from the existing outlet with an added manhole so there is no conflict with the grading and access is provided. The applicant is cautioned that plan changes should be approved prior to implementation. Additionally, a fourth modification has been requested to allow for the swale at the street end to be lowered to elevation 62 to allow for a clear hydraulic path to the infiltration basin. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
And then we'll have it out with the water department.
I'd like to know how that goes, because, you know, we permit projects and, but-
Well, we'd like to know too.
We'd like to know, so if nobody did it, send them our way.
Got the right policies. Do you want these drawn back?
No, you take them.
Right, I'm going.
Thank you so much.
There we go, thank you. Thanks a lot, guys.
Yep.
Paper, paper, don't leave saving the trees.
Okay, the tree for trees, the tree for the trees. All right, now we have the trees, Mr. Burwick. Surety, set surety for 6 McDonald Terrace, Bob Burwick. I didn't know, I didn't-
Aye.
Okay, you have to identify yourself and tell us what you're doing, please.
Bob Burwick, RJV Development for 6 McDonald Terrace regarding the surety bond. I submitted to Karen an estimate of approximately $63,000 for drainage, parking, lighting, fencing, landscaping, and signage. She forwarded it to the overseeing engineering company, Merrill Engineering. Peter Palmieri, he reviewed it and responded to Karen that he thought the estimate was reasonable. Karen, my understanding has indicated that a 15% add-on required by the town and I believe is recommending a $75,000 bond.
Yes, and so we have a bond, Karen?
Well, he'll have, he has the option to provide either cash or a bond. That's the only acceptable sureties they'll take. We are working on wording for a bond. And I, you know, I'll just have to finalize it with town council last week. But the planning board has to set the amount so that he can actually obtain the bond.
All right, questions from the board?
No. Okay.
I move that the surety for 6 McDonald Terrace for the mixed-use special permit in the village business overlay district be set at $75,000 based on the applicant's estimate by construction costs reviewed by the town's consulting engineer, Peter Palmieri, and the addition of a 15% contingency. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, now we have a discussion of surety requirements.
So this discussion we are removing from the agenda tonight. He is going to be able to get his bond. And so this was added because we weren't sure at the time he was going to be able to get a bond. But, so we're removing this from the discussion tonight.
Take that right off.
Another satisfied customer.
There you go. Okay. We now have a discussion of seaside at Situate, construction and drainage issues.
This is all the conditioning carpeting.
Oh, Toll Brothers. Gentlemen.
Thank you. Jeff Delisi with Dave Buckley from Toll Brothers. Yes, I missed the last meeting, but there was, I guess the town was holding some building permits and occupancy permits because there were some issues with the site and the stabilization. And so we're just here- And so we're just here to report what has occurred since the last meeting and hopefully you'll take it as a positive report, so, Dave.
Dave Buckley, Toll Brothers, how you doing this evening? I, I don't care if you had a chance, opportunity to submit any of the photos that we spoke of earlier.
I submitted them to the board, I submitted them to board late this afternoon, so.
Great, great. So I, just to give everyone a recap, we, when we, when we last met and, you know, I'll save it in the trouble of dancing on the wall at a plant again this evening. We've been engaged over the last several weeks with a large volume of site stabilization measures. As I maybe mentioned, we had, we took the approach of working the site in a multi-phased approach, phase one being concentrating on BMPs and focusing on items that would prevent additional silt, water leaving the job site. We then worked into a phase two, starting what we call a phase two, starting two weeks ago, which is really focused on concentrating and reducing our footprint of unstableized soil. And that mainly is focused on the common areas of the community. To give some perspective of those areas, there's a, the large hill when you first drive into the community behind adjacent communities, the area behind the duplex lots along Hathley, areas behind, in between two building packs off of Benjamin Lane and Thelma Lane and down off of Lois Ann. Where you have installed, gosh, I think it was about 72,000 square feet of sod in the last few weeks on those common areas. We have seeded probably about an additional similar volume since that, that, over the last few weeks. We have installed additional treatment swales out on Tilden and additional out on Hathley. In addition to numerous other BMPs and additional super silt fence throughout the site. So as we're stabilizing, the goal is as we're stabilizing these areas, we're following up immediately behind with additional BMPs. You both saw today the areas on the duplexes, for example, where we sawed it and we have now stabilized and completed. We're immediately budding up and separating the unstableized areas with a super silt fence from those now stabilized areas to prevent mitigation of dirty water into clean spaces and vice versa, clean water from entering into dirty spaces and actually making it more of a management challenge down the road. So we've been successfully reducing our footprint throughout the site, which is, I would have to say is definitely making a difference and making the management of the site significantly easier. And we're proceeding to, we've been fast-tracking the work out on the duplex lots. We have proceeded to sod the third of the fifth unit when we last came in here. We were probably half done with the second unit for sodding and now we've completed three out of the five fully stabilized lots across that way. The exteriors of the buildings, which has to be completed first before we can stabilize the exterior, is pretty much completed on both of the last two duplex buildings currently. Gutters have been installed in one unit and gutters are soon to follow on the final, the fifth unit. We were, we're probably tracking right now, probably the first week of September right now to get fully stabilized. And by fully stabilized, I mean planted, sodded, out on the duplex lots completely. Of course, the one last bit would be that sediment pond that we have out back behind those units right now. Additionally, just as a belt and suspenders, I may or may not have mentioned this last time, we added a second pump. We had a pump system down in there right now. We had a pump system in place there last time we spoke, or last time I came in here. We just installed a second pump down there and upgraded the pipe just as belt and suspenders. It was, all of the calculations are only using and based off of one pump. The second pump is what happens if the first one breaks, sort of deal. And that's more, more for our peace of mind more than anything, but I'm reporting it because it's something that's been added since we last met several weeks ago. I don't think I missed anything. I think that really sort of encompasses the major work that we've been working on. We are proceeding with one of the last major final areas. I understand that you may not all know the street names, but there's a large swath of area behind Lois Ann that carries down one side of the street and down and around, heading towards Hathley, which is about half that swath is, has been stable for quite some time. It has received a bit of silt mitigation, migration into it over the course of construction. You know, Karen has seen it on a number of occasions, but we're now focused on getting that area 100% done and wrapped up. Now that all the buildings on that street are, they've been all constructed, so we have no more major building construction happening down that road. So that's our next major push that we're working on currently. We just started that the other day.
Karen?
All right, so a large, there has been a lot of work done since we first had the problem. Since they were last in three weeks ago, a lot of work has been done. So, I mean, areas are stable. Like Dave just said, there's, there's two, the area behind Lois Ann, the swale at Lois Ann needs, needs to be regraded and that is next on the list. There's an area just off the clubhouse by detention basin E that also needs to be fixed. But they, they've committed to sodding that and they've committed to doing the Lois Ann as the next major thing. All the other general areas are basically stabilized. You'll now see, I mean, you see the jute mesh netting on the swale over at the end of Thelma in phase two and some hay down, so I think they've come a long way. I would recommend that the board allow me to, we have seven building permits in the queue. The seven building permits right now are located at the end of Thelma in the phase two area. And today, as we did our site walk, they were putting down the stabilized construction entrances. I would recommend that we let them have those building permits and start going into there. With the understanding that conservation still has to levy their fine and that the condition out there for the erosion control is what we expect to see from here on out. I mean, everything, you know, it's, it's been super beefed up in the last few weeks. How long will it take to get this, the work done by Lois Ann?
I, I mean, there's probably maybe a few weeks worth of work out there. I mean, SLT's got a decent concentration.
Can we reasonably expect that it would be done by August 30th, the next date of the Conservation Commission meeting?
I would think so. I mean, yeah, I would think so. I'm just saying offhand, it's maybe a few weeks worth of work out, out there. I haven't, I don't have SLT's schedule in front of me, but they've committed a decent crew to it right now and made a good progress in just the last day or two.
So if we can get a commitment that the work will be done by 8:30 for those two areas that, and they're still continuing the rest of the program. We also reviewed the, and I forget the house number, the single-family dwelling on Hathley Road.
44.
144 Hathley Road, we also reviewed that today. They've done some regrading in the backyard, so they made a swale that comes around and they've taken the roof drain and switched it from one side to the other side of the house so that the, the drainage is supposed to go.
This is on the southern end of those?
This is by the 10th, by the 10th Ave.
Right, the southern end.
On the east side of Hathley.
On the east side of Hathley.
Yep, and so they've committed to giving us a new, as-built for that area with micro topo of the, so that we can make sure that it really works.
Did, did that stop the flooding that was in there during this last rainstorm?
I think it was done after the last rainstorm. Because, no, the last rainstorm, you got the pictures from the abutter.
That was the last rainstorm?
That was the last rainstorm.
His work was just completed.
So that, the work has just been done. So, I mean, we get the mic, I would like to get the micro topo in the next week so that we can evaluate that again because it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of wat, it's a lot of water that went to the neighbor's property that really shouldn't be happening. So things have progressed greatly. There are still a couple areas that we are in active negotiations on. And one of them is the puddle on Hathley Road that everybody keeps complaining about. We acknowledge there's a puddle there and we are working between, we've discussed with Toll Brothers and we've discussed with the DPW. And we intend to be coming up with a solution in the next few, few weeks for that. So we understand that it's a problem, that the problem originated, has been originated there for a long time. And so a solution is being worked upon. So I, I would recommend that we release the building permits in the queue. We still do occupancy permits. And if at any time we feel that it's not working, we stop again.
We didn't hold up any occupancy permits?
No, he didn't.
It was just building permits, correct?
No, we held up occupancy permits, but it did not impact any occupancy because they finished.
Sales going on?
They finished, they finished work and we agreed that a significant amount of work had been completed. So nothing was held up. But we, we originally did, yes, we, we held up occupancy permits after the, after.
June 22nd, yes.
Are you suggesting, Karen, with respect to occupancy permits, that you would contemplate continuing to withhold some? Or when you say, still do them, you mean?
I will still keep issuing them as long as things are maintained in, as the current condition out there. And conservation supports this approach as well.
I mean, one of the things I think you all have to understand is that this was sort of a last, this was a come-to-Jesus moment with you guys. It really was because it, it was untenable with what was going on. And we had to get your attention. And this is what it took to get your attention. And I have to say that, you know, we were trying, someone, who shall remain anonymous, was trying to say that, well, we were holding up all of these people from moving into their units and they had been waiting for so many months. The reality is, it wasn't the planning board that was holding them up. It was Toll Brothers. If all of this, as I said the last time, had been done correctly in the first place, we wouldn't be sitting here. No, and Steve was absolutely correct when he said, you do not have the right to put your water on anybody else's property. So needless to say, we're not going to withhold anything from you all as long as you keep up your end of the bargain. You have to. It's in your best interest that you do. And it appears from the pictures and what have you that you are making a concern, more effort than you have made previous to the 22nd of June. So something has happened. We got your attention. And it worked. And so if we have to, we will again. But I don't think we will because I think you understand where we're coming from, okay? Anybody on the board want to say anything before I open it up to whoever's sitting in the audience?
No, I just want to reinforce what Karen said at the beginning here is that kind of we've now raised our game. You've raised your game to something that appears to be working and that's, that's the new norm. Right, that, that is how we need to approach it. So I just think you have to continue on in that vein.
Anyone in the audience want to put their two cents worth in here? No? Okay. Yes?
I'm the resident of 140 Hathley Road. My name is Chris Rock. I think you mentioned 144, that was just a lot of number. But I'll just address 140. And I live on, at that new, we rented there in September, so I monitored the progress since the foundation was there. And I noticed my documented photographs and emails. There's been a high water table that was explained to me. I even had water sitting on the foundation of the house back in winter time. And it was, it was way too much water in my opinion for the footprint of the front of that block. Especially noting that 60% of it is wetlands to the rear and to the side and to the north direction away from that avenue. So I knew something was wrong there with the drainage because it was just, but, you know, it's new to the area. I explained this is a high water table. It's unusual season, even when it's winter, but that condition has persisted. And I appreciate the efforts that many recently. I haven't seen that they'll actually work with actual, you know, storm condition or decent amount of rainfall, but it is, it is progress. And I appreciate the overhead elevations and the drainage that has been rerouted. And I feel bad for my bloody neighbors on that avenue being impacted incorrectly by, by water that's either coming across Hathley or is originating from the construction on the house. So I appreciate your extension. Toll Brothers efforts have risen and I'll continue to monitor it and, you know, remind you that I can.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, please do that.
Anyone else? Anything further?
Nope.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a few weeks. Take another walk.
All right. All right, so we'll, we'll chat about. Right, yep, yep. Now we have a discussion with the Director of Planning and Development, who none of us have officially met.
Officially.
I am shocked that we got right on time here.
We're working hard.
I'm so used to planning board meetings that, uh, this is great.
It's unusual.
It isn't.
Oh, sorry.
I always have my meetings on time.
Whoa. I think that was accidental.
You're back to a slams anyway. All right, if you would care to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself because I don't think anybody here has really met you.
Well, it's great to meet you all. Thank you for having me here. I'm Kyle Boyd. I'm Planning and Development Director. So before I worked in Situate, I was the conservation agent for four years in Tewksbury and then the town planner for two years. And all that time I was, I was studying under the Assistant Town Manager and Planning and Development Director, Steve Sadwick. So I really, during that time, I was overseeing the Green Committee, the CPC, the Open Space Committee. So it was actually a really great experience. And then from there, I became a Coastal Management Officer in Situate. And I was the Coastal Management Officer for two years up until four months ago. And I applied for the Planning and Development Director position and I received it. So I've actually been doing both the Planning and Development Director and Coastal Management Officer position up until three weeks ago, where we hired a new Coastal Management Officer. And I've been spending the last couple of weeks training her. So I finally feel like I'm fully turning the page now to be Planning and Development Director full-time. But I'll say a little bit about what I've been working on since I've been in Situate. So some of the bigger initiatives that I did as Coastal Management Officer that I'm also carrying over into Planning and Development Director. In the last year and a half, we did a downtown harbor sustainability and resiliency master plan, which I think you guys may or may not be familiar with. But that was a really big effort. We received some grant funding from MAPC to really analyze the downtown harbor. There was a task force involved. We worked closely with the business owners to come up with some implementation recommendations for what we should be doing down in the harbor with a resiliency focus. So there were some really good recommendations that came out of that that I'm now going to be moving on as a Planning and Development Director because they have a lot to do with that area overall, not just resiliency, but like protecting the businesses and all that stuff. So we did a Peggy Beach Managed Retreat feasibility study, which a lot of people don't know about, but that was a, a big effort where the residents down there actually came to the town and were interested in exploring retreat options. So that was something that was really fun to be a part of and very rare. So to follow that up, I'm actually, this is a part of the master plan, that's why I bring it up. I'm helping submit a bill to the House of Representatives to try to make a more effective buyback program in the state. So that was one of the goals that came out of that. We also did a coastal vision process. So there was a lot of, when I So, there was a lot of, when I started, I realized there was a lot of, um, it didn't seem like everything was incredibly harmonious with all the residents in regards to their position on how things have been dealt in regards to planning efforts around the coast. So, it seemed like there was some resentments that potentially could have interrupted future planning processes. So, the 2070 Vision Process was to try to get everyone back in the room together to bring everyone back to the table to create a cohesive vision and get rid of some of that division that existed. And then, one of the other big things that I just finished up on, that is a big responsibility to the community, is the CRS. So, every year, we have a, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the CRS, but as a coastal community, we're required to submit annual reports to the National Flood Insurance Program. Every five years, we have to do a huge audit and it's, it's a pretty big haul. So, we, we finished that a few months ago and then we've been going back and forth for the last few months and that just finalized. Got the email, actually, an hour ago. And then, home elevations, where I just finished 12 home elevations and still, over the last month, I was applying for more. That's now going to be, a lot of this stuff's going to be managed by the Coastal Management Officer. But that's what I've been up to to date. The big initiative that I'm now focused on, that's more from a Planning and Development Director perspective that I was mentioning, is I met with MIMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, yesterday with the fire chief. And we are going to be trying to go after the brick grant to come up with some conceptual designs for the harbor. So, the edge of the harbor is primarily town-owned. So, we're going to be hopefully applying for $300,000 to $400,000 in the brick grant to get funding to come up with some different design scenarios. And it'll be very interactive with the business owners down there. I know there's more, oh yeah, so I'm going to be on the Pier 44 Committee, which I'm excited about. I think that has the potential to be great for the town. Just backtrack for one second, say I love this community. I, I really do. Like, I, I go down to the harbor and the jetty almost every day. And we are updating the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which I'm overseeing. And that is important, because all our grant funding at the state and federal level is contingent upon us having that plan in good order. So, I will be honest, I haven't been too involved with the North Situate stuff, because I've been kind of following the guidance of Jim and Kevin in that regard. It's waiting on clear direction on how to proceed. But I'm ready to proceed to apply for grants as soon as we get to go ahead on the direction and that. But, I am motivated and excited to be here.
Okay. North Situate, as you know, needs sewer.
Yes.
Desperately. So, there is that. And North Situate has always been a poor relative. Always.
Could you say that again? Sorry.
Poor relative.
A poor relative.
Oh, poor relative.
Yep, that's what we are, of North Situate. But also, too, you know, we need to come up with, if you can find grants. And as a matter of fact, the new infrastructure trillion dollars that went through Congress, that's going through to the House, is money for every single state for infrastructure. And I'm wondering if we can somehow get involved with money for sewer. Because something needs to be done. The sewer treatment plant is now at 80% to 85%. It's helped that we've done, or are working on, Cedar Point. But we're also right on the river. And so, with climate change, sea level rise, you know, something needs to be thought about as far as that is concerned. As well as looking into, we, we had federal funds 50 years ago and we, most of what's Easter 3A was paid for by the feds. And then, that went away. And if we can somehow get that back again to help us move forward with the infrastructure.
And part of the infrastructure issue is that when there is a major storm, Situate is seen internationally. I have friends in Belgium, "What is going on here?" I mean, so, people are aware that Situate is struggling with climate change. I mean, we should be a perfect ecosystem for some giant university or something to come in and say, "We'd like to help you." You know, try to manage your change. I mean, so, like I said, the wastewater treatment plant is just not where it's supposed to be.
Right. And, and also, too, as far as Front Street is concerned, it floods at basically every high moon tide, twice a day. And there are people down there, which is something that will be discussed. These people bought condos, some of them 10, 20 years ago, and they have no parking. And yet, supposedly because of the bylaw, they can't have parking. But then, when the Mill Wharf came in and switched the movie theater to, is it three or four condos?
Four.
Four.
They got parking.
They got parking, 14 spaces. You know, what is that all about? And they use the same bylaw. It doesn't pass the straight face test. Because they're trying to say that movie theater parking of these 14 new spaces are less detrimental than movie parking, which only runs for two hours at a time. So, there's a lot of stuff.
Just so I understand clearly, who is that?
Mill Wharf has went before the Zoning Board of Appeals-
Okay.
-to obtain four units, condos, where the movie theater is. And ZBA gave them a Section 6 finding and told them that they did not need to come before the planning board for site plan review, even though it was a change of use, first and foremost. And they're saying that they can have 14 spaces and yet, there are people at 124 Front Street who do not have any parking at all.
They were denied parking?
Yes.
No, 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 no.
I'm not totally denied.
There was never any parking associated with that building.
Actually, there was a gentleman's agreement with the Welsh Company to park in the, in the Welsh Company parking lot. And then, when it changed hands, that gentleman's agreement went away. So, there's something, there are seven units down there and it's something that needs to be resolved. It's not a planning issue. It's, who knows what the issue is. And the other thing to think about, too, as far as the harbor is concerned, is because of flooding, et cetera, although the housing there has changed, go up the hill to Hazel and turn that into the Harbor Business District. As a matter of fact, the hotel is half in the residential district and half in the Harbor Business District, which doesn't really make a lot of sense. So, there are some zoning issues that desperately need to be done in the harbor. We've taken care of, planning is taken care of, Green Bush, we have decent VCN bylaw. We've done North Situate. And we're talking at some point of that type of thing in the harbor.
Right, but it's, we are going to need a grant for that.
We'll need a grant.
We are going to need a grant for that, because that's not something we're doing in-house.
No, we can't.
MAPC has said that they have grant programs. MAPC is the one who did North Situate. But, it's, it's just not, I see, I see that as a year or two away.
So, MAPC-
Well, there's a lot of connection between that and all these other-
Correct.
-disparate plans, right? I mean, you know, you've got to look at what the long-term impacts on climate change are going to be and what the, what the flooding's going to look like in the harbor. I don't, when you say the Downtown Resiliency Master Plan, you're moving on recommendations, I guess. I don't know what those specific recommendations are. Do they tie in with the longer-term sort of master plan? And, and really, I guess, you know, sort of, the lead question is, have you, have you read the master plan? And we need somebody to lead with that plan so that we can implement the recommendations that came out of that master plan. I mean, we're planning to go to town meeting with it and that has to be the, sort of, the guiding document. And I think some of these things were in it, but, you know, some of the recommendations that were in it were, you know, were billion-dollar recommendations, right? I mean, they were, "We're going to elevate every coastal road" and, you know, those kinds of things. I, I just don't see that as a viable option here, right? And so, I guess, with your position, my, my major question is, are you really going to take the master plan and use that and, and try to bring that into all elements of planning and development?
Yeah. Yeah, one thing I didn't mention is, I actually have somebody I'm working with. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with John Clarkson, but he used to work for the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And he's taking all of the recommendations from all the plans and coming up with a matrix that, it's going to be a prioritization matrix. And then, he's going to create a draft action plan. So, I am moving forward with the master plan, but also all the other plans. And it's been a little challenging, because there have been so many plans, as you guys are aware.
Yeah, a lot of them.
What we're doing is, we're creating, right now, we are in the process of just, we actually have done this already, but we've taken all the, we've created basically like a two-page summary of every plan and we put those in packets so that anybody can have, so they can easily understand all the plans. But now, we're taking all the recommendations from all the plans and putting them in a separate matrix that we're going to prioritize. We're still trying to figure out if we want to do that, how we want to include the community in that process. But, we had actually applied to the state to come up with an implementation plan that would have included the master plan, it would have included the resiliency plan, all the plans, but we got denied. So, anyway, I'm creating my own, but it's going to include the master plan and all the other plans.
Well, I think the master plan actually references all the other plans, so it's one and the same, right? That's good. I, I would really be interested in seeing what John comes up with, in terms of the matrix. Because it felt to me in the master plan that we, we had alternatives and options that, to get, that you couldn't do together, that you had to go one direction or the other, right? That, that you couldn't, you couldn't implement all of these things all at once. It's just way too much. And in fact, you know, if you, if you went one direction, some other recommendation didn't make any sense, right? So, to me, that's kind of where we need to go with this. And, I mean, I'd be, it's great. John does great work. John used to work for me a long time ago. And I, I'd love to see what he puts together on this, really. I mean, as far as sort of long-term planning.
I actually would be open to, to having one of the planning board members meet with John to provide input to shape that process. If you're interested. Our goal was to, we were already so far along in kind of coming up with the matrix just for the coastal plans, because that's what I was chipping away at before I became Planning and Development Director. So, our goal was to finish that up and then add in the master plan and a couple of other economic development plans. So, I would be happy to have you guys kind of give him any feedback that's important to you, to being in that process, so.
I'd be happy to look at the matrix. Happy to have him come in and talk to us, too.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea if he came in and talked to us.
I think our, our interest is in helping move this-
Forward.
You know, the, all of the effort that went into the master plan.
Yeah.
Not, not just from this board, but from everybody in town, that, helping move it forward and address the issues. And, you know, we've talked a lot about the coast and we've talked about that, because the major challenge for Situate is along the coast. But it's also infrastructure. It's sewer and water. And, you know, being able to address those at the same time. You know, I think that's just part of sort of implementing and moving forward with the master plan itself.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm happy to lead a lot of these initiatives. I was planning on whenever, you know, it is a reasonable time to move forward on the rezoning of the harbor initiative. That was something I was already kind of, kind of had on my radar, because MAPC recommended that in the resiliency master plan, too. So, they will easily be ready to fund that when it's ready to be taken on. And, you know, for me, a lot of the times, it's like, I'm ready to write a lot of these grants. But we have to also be ready to manage them and make sure we have the capacity in-house to, to manage all these grants. And what I did, my first two years, was I applied for and received probably five pretty big grants. And that was juggling a lot. So, it's not that I, I'm not interested in moving on everything, but I'm a little more, like, I try to focus on a couple of big initiatives at a time and make sure we do those really well versus being two all over the place. So, I'm happy to work with you guys to steer the priorities and as long as we have the capacity in-house, we'll definitely go after any grant that makes sense for the town. And then, I'm also trying to, I've talked to a couple of different department heads and it seems there is an overlapping need to have some sort of grant writer. So, if there was one person specifically allocated to that position, I think it could extend itself into making a lot of money for the community in return. I know some other communities do that, but it's just something that's been put on my radar recently.
We used to have a grant writer, a long time ago.
Not that long ago, but yeah. So, Kyle, I heard through the grapevine that Cohasset is going ahead with the sewer down South Main Street. Has anybody else heard that?
The what?
The sewer is reactivated in conversation in Cohasset.
I can find out.
The sewer commissioner, so it's been reconstituted, so the sewer commissioners are a separate board. And I heard that they are actively looking at searing South Main Street again to tie into North Situate, which is what we need.
But to tie into-
North Situate, so to get to Hull.
We're all going to Hull at some point.
I know Hingham's on NWRA sewer.
And part-
Part of it is.
Part of it. Think, well, North Cohasset goes to Hull.
Hull has its own wastewater treatment plant.
Right, and it's underutilized. That's why they, they have the capacity to take more. Do you have anything that you would like to?
No, not, not right now. I guess, I'd just say, I think, like Ann was talking about, there's, if this infrastructure bill passes Congress, it's like 39 or some ridiculous amount of money going to FEMA just for flood, for flooding. And whether that's, you know, re, you know, recon, or I guess, like paying back some of the NFIP money or mitigation measures, like elevation or, or retreat, just nothing at the word right now. The buyback grants, but definitely, there's a lot, a lot of stuff out there. The brick program for FEMA, they should definitely take advantage of and be happy to work with you anytime. I work for FEMA as my day job, so. And flood map. My job, engineering.
Oh, that's cool. Yeah, I actually was meeting, I met with David, like I was saying, from MIMA yesterday. And he was saying, they're getting so much money, he doesn't know if they're ready to handle it all, you know? And he did think that there was a correlation with the increased flood insurance rates that are coming out. So, there's going to be a big increase. So, there's going to be a big increase in some of the rates on coastal homes coming up, and that's just what he was saying, but that could cause more people to want to elevate. So, he was thinking a big portion of money is going to be new interest in home elevations.
Is that the best solution? To be 50 feet up? I mean, seriously.
Still got to run the infrastructure and the road.
Right. And then the infrastructure gets crushed because of all the stuff that comes over. I think maybe it's time to say, three strikes, you're out, and that there's a buyback.
Well, yeah, but that would have to be, it's the homeowner's decision ultimately, whether they want to elevate or...
But how long do we have to pay for them?
As far as what?
Well, for us responders, because they refuse to leave.
I don't know, I guess as long as they pay property taxes.
It gets into some pretty interesting property rights, but the reality is, is that the current buyback program is not really appetizing for the homeowners in regards to the time it takes. You know, it can be a couple of years from front to end to receive all the money, and then sometimes that can be like 75% of what your actual home is valued. And so, with the way the market is right now, like, it's not really that great of an option for people to be bought out. So, there is a bill that, that's what I was talking about earlier, that is, I believe, been filed in-house, that I'm going to be working with them to, like, speak on behalf, to come up with a more effective buyback program that makes it more efficient and gets homeowners the money that they are looking for in a timely fashion. So, that's the goal of the bill. Whether it passes and whether it ends up being efficient?
Who knows? We don't know. Ben, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, I guess, my comment on, I guess, a little bit about your position and how I, as a planning board member, see you fitting in with us, is that, I mean, in general, Karen and Shari do like a tremendous job running, you know, the day-to-day functions of the board, dealing with all of our permitting and things like that, and I think also as a board, we do a fairly good job with our zoning bylaw updates when we see something, you know, the squeaky wheel kind of gets the grease thing that needs to be dealt with. I think really how we see ourselves working with you, and this is how I envisioned when this, you know, I was, I think I was around when this position got created, when we voted at a town meeting, and with your predecessor as well, is really, we need help with kind of the more aspirational, big picture kind of stuff, which a lot of, you know, the guiding document for that, it really is this master plan update. And I guess what we need from you is to be a bridge and kind of our point person to coordinate with the rest of Town Hall and kind of keep us in the loop and represent our board, and we'll bring things, you know, our opinions to you and really kind of shepherd some of these initiatives, and particularly the goals of the master plan forward in kind of organized and functioning process. So, because it is very easy, you know, for us to get bogged down with the day-to-day and the smaller zoning, things that we're chipping away at, so that's kind of how I see us all working together.
Great, yeah, that's exactly how I envisioned my role, too, so. Anything you guys need, anytime you want me to come back, if there's anything you want me to focus on, just let me know.
Well, I would suggest that we have a periodic check-in, that we don't go another, you know, nine months or however long it's been, and do that, that maybe, you know, once every three months, once a quarter, or something like that, we should have you on the agenda. We should talk about, you know, where are you now, where are the things we should be able to possibly give some feedback, and just make sure we stay connected. I mean, even these things about, well, people are starting to think about raising their homes, we need to make sure somebody's looking broad enough to say, it's not just about putting a house of piles, but what are the impacts to the town of situat in doing that? And as I said, if the house is 20 feet up, you know, the infrastructure that the town owns is still coming on the ground and all that kind of stuff, and the question at some point is, do you need to, do you need to change the town's approach to providing that infrastructure support for, you know, structures that are at risk, basically? I don't know the answer to that, but I just think we need to start thinking about those, those, you know, those initiatives in a broader sense, as opposed to sort of looking at the postage stamp that somebody's connected to.
Right. Absolutely right.
I completely agree, and that's actually the reason that we did the 2070 vision. At first, people were asking, why would you have a vision of the 2070 vision? But that length of time makes it far out enough where some of the things that are harder to look at from like a tomorrow perspective become more of a reality when you extend it that far out. So, like, things like retreat make more sense when you're looking at it from a 2070 perspective. So, we did start the analytical process in that document. We had hoped when we applied for the 10-year implementation plan as a follow-up, we would get into the specific locations of town and have those difficult conversations, but we got denied. So, we may now with John try to rely for that, because he has some good connections and an understanding of probably why we got denied, so.
Rebecca, do you have anything?
No, right now. Thank you, though. Thanks for coming.
So, Kyle, thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any requests from us?
No, I just want to thank Karen for setting this up, and Karen, like you said, Ben, as they do a great job, Shari and Karen running the office, and I'm really grateful for that. So, I try to let them do the day-to-day, and I look forward to working on some of the bigger initiatives with you guys.
Okay, well, keep us in the loop.
Can I just say one thing before? In a previous meeting, you had mentioned that you wanted to first sit with Kyle and then sit with Kyle and the selectmen.
Yes, we need to bring them in, too.
What is the status of, do you still want to pursue that? Because all of this, all these initiatives depend on limited funds, and so, do we still want to try to seek that meeting out? And what is your thoughts on the timing of that meeting? Their retreat has been postponed till end of September, so what, I mean, we just need something to work with here.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to remember back in that conversation, I think that was sort of a conversation about how do we move forward with the master plan, sort of management and implementation. That was the objective, right, is to first have this conversation, first meet Kyle and have this conversation about it, and then be able to go to the Board of Selectmen in sort of summarizing, you know, kind of the master plan at some level, and talk about how we should be thinking about implementing it within the town.
So, right now, you will have a warrant article on for endorsement of the master plan. That will be on the October 26th Town Meeting. Do you want to have that conversation before Town Meeting?
It would seem to make sense.
It would seem to make sense. So, are we theoretically plus or minus targeting, like, the first meeting in October, to try to have that meeting?
When is that?
October 14th. I'm just going by, I'm going, I'm going by your schedule here. I mean, do we, is that something that we're looking to try to, I mean, set up and, you know, to talk about?
Yep.
Yeah, I would think, you know, when's the Town Meeting?
26th.
October?
Of October.
Yeah, then that's probably, at least, and what would the selectmen's timing be on sort of evaluating and making a recommendation themselves on a master plan? Would it be before or after that conversation?
Oh, it'd be before that. I mean, they're...
We should probably talk to them before that, then, right?
All right, so then, all right, so let's talk out loud, all right? I'm just going to jump ahead a little bit so that we can take, get the clear picture. We got a, we got a citizen petition for zoning the other day, so we have to now have a zoning public hearing to, the petition is for marijuana, to have, basically, what they want to do is everywhere in the zoning bylaws, there's medical, basically, medical marijuana, they want to put indoor marijuana establishment. So, we have to have a zoning public hearing, and that was going to be on the 9th is the soonest we can do that. The select, although, the warrant and stuff is all going to get finalized during September because the warrant stuff pretty much gets to print mid-October, so before the 14th. So, we can target then the 23rd, if you'd like, to try to get the selectmen in, because we also ran into another little problem, is that we can't have any public hearings next time because the Mariner didn't publish our legal ads. We had them to the Mariner in a timely manner, we had a receipt that said, "Thank you," but our legal ads did not get in the paper. So, I'll have to be calling those people tomorrow and telling them, "We can hear you now on September 9th."
I mean, I would, I would think we'd want to get to the selectmen.
Sooner than later.
Sooner than later. I just know, I can't do it on the 23rd.
Okay.
But that negates that. But that's just me, right?
Yeah, but you're important, knowing to be here.
Well, not that important, so.
Oh, come on, cut it out.
I think Ben could do a good job on that, too, so I think, you know, you know, I think it's just important to, you know, get a date and have an opportunity to talk about it.
See, we'll have a feel and see if we can do it.
26th, and then what's the next meeting after that?
We have August 26th, September 9th, September 23rd.
Those are our meetings.
Those are our meetings.
Like, when would, when could we, because the selectmen, will they come here? Are we going?
Yes, we're going to ask them to come here.
And make them sit over there.
So, why couldn't we do the 9th?
Well, all right, so the 9th, you're going to have an accessory dwelling unit, you're going to have a public hearing for your citizen petition, you're also going to have another public, the other public hearing that was postponed, 533 Countryway, you have a stormwater and site plan administrative review. So, we could have it on the 9th, but I don't know what else is going to come in between now and then, too.
I think the last one in August is probably the best, because the September 9th one is, it's full.
I mean, we know 533 Countryway is probably going to be at least an hour.
Oh, at least.
I don't know how long the citizen, I mean, the citizen petition could be very short, but it'll be, you know, Town Meeting will be the, whatever, you know...
When that came up before Town Meeting, it was literally four hours. I thought everybody in the place was stoned, it took so long.
Right, so, I mean, I can see if we can do August 26th. August 26th, we have a, we have a continuation of a stormwater public hearing, which we haven't received anything for, and we have a surety release request.
Okay.
Well, I think if we do this, we should have the selectmen first, so we can accommodate their schedule.
We already have, we already have a 6:30 public hearing, theoretically.
Is it too late to change the time?
Yeah, we can't, you continued it to a time and date certain at the last hearing, so we can't, we can't change that time. I'm not thinking, I'm thinking they may not be ready, because they haven't submitted anything.
So, we'll just put it at a, you know, 7:30 and, you know, do that, do the selectmen, just so we can manage it.
I mean, we, I can see if they can come at 7:00.
Can we finish the other one in a half an hour?
No, you can't finish the other one in a half hour. You debated the other one for an hour last time, an hour plus. I can see 7:30.
Yeah, I'm okay with either. I just like to try to give them a sort of a timeframe.
All right, I'll come up with some wording tomorrow, and I'll run it by Ann, and we'll see, and I'll...
We'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
That was great to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
See you soon.
Yep, you will. Okay, now we have all business, new business. Discuss timing of meetings going forward. Don't everyone, okay. No.
No, I, that's what, is that what we're talking about?
No, the other thing is, do we want to go back to virtual? I hope you say no, virtual meetings.
Does it depend on us, so we have to wait to see what they tell us?
It's up to us. It's up to the chair, actually.
I thought it was up to the governor.
No, it's up, you can, you can, right now, we're in a mode where you can have, you have to be all here or all virtual. It's up to the, technically, it's up to the chair of the board, but I think, you know, you guys all pulled each other and said you wanted to be here. So, it's just whatever, it either has to be all one way or all another way, but you can alternate meetings, too. You're allowed to have some meeting, you know, if you want to say you'll meet through the end of August, all here, and then, you know, take, play it by ear, that's fine, but I have to do, we have to do legal advertising now for September. So, that's, we kind of got to know on September 9th if you think you want to be remote or here. I would think we'd want to be here, but just for the topics.
And I like having them in front of me, I really do.
But if it gets out of control again, then...
And then we will...
The Delta virus goes, I mean, the virus just changed, right?
Then we'll have to, then we'll have to go, then, to be safe to everybody, we'll have to go remote.
Yeah.
All right.
Now, if that turns out to be the case, then I'm prepared to do it virtually at that point, you know?
Okay.
That would be my opinion, anyway.
I'm still coming. Whatever, whatever, we'll cross that bridge if we get to it.
We'll take it up at each meeting as we go forward.
Except for the public hearings.
Well, the 26th, we said we're going to be here, right?
Yes.
26th, we said we're going to be here. September 9th.
If the selectmen come, we have to be here.
We have...
We have to know for September 9th.
We have an accessory dwelling unit, we have the citizen petition zoning hearing, and we have the stormwater site plan administrative review.
When do you have to know in order to know that it's either virtual or in person?
Next week. Because we have to get the legal ad to the paper next, we have to get the legal ad to the paper next Wednesday.
I don't have any sense of what direction kind of the state's going. It's getting worse, for sure.
Right.
The state might just shut it down anyway, so you don't know.
I know, what do you need to know before we get back together again?
Well, I mean, we can, we can write it as if we're going to be here, but then if it all of a sudden has to go virtual because of the state saying something, then it'll go virtual.
Okay.
I mean, if that's the way you want to go, that we can do that. We'll write it as if it's going to be in person, but then, if it, you know...
And if it changes, how much lead time do you need to have to change it?
We can always put something on the website, a butter, they will still get their butter notification, so, you know.
Okay.
I mean, everybody knows we're kind of in a state of flux, so everybody's just kind of...
Everything is up in the air.
And we already sent a butter notification out for the 26th, so these people are going to come, and we're going to have to tell them, or if anybody's going to come, we're going to tell them, "Sorry, we can't have the public hearing, we're going to have to..." We're gonna have to immediately continue it, you know, through no fault of our own.
All right.
We will strive to be here.
Yes. Okay.
Well, I would say do, do the ninth as an in-person meeting.
Okay.
That's as far as I would look out.
Okay.
And then when we come together on the twenty-sixth, we'll revisit the question for the twenty-third.
Okay.
Except that I won't be here on the twenty-third.
You, you're not here on September twenty-third?
You're not here? Okay. All right, minutes. I move to approve the minutes for July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accounting.
I move to approve the requisition of three thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents to Horsey Witten Group for peer review services at Seaside at Situate. For one thousand three hundred twenty dollars to image resolutions for printing of zoning bylaws. For one hundred twenty dollars and ninety-six cents to Gate House Media for legal ad for Twenty-three Vinyl Road. For sixty-five dollars fifty-two cents to Gate House Media for legal ad for Sixteen Man Hill Road. And for one thousand eight hundred dollars to Merrill Corporation for Peer Review Services for Sixteen Man Hill Road. For two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to Merrill Corporation for Peer Review Services for residents at Driftway Place.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Layers on reports. Does anybody have a report? Okay. I went to CPC Monday night and the selectmen are holding a public, I'm not sure, I think it's early October, late September, about the East Field on Border Street. Do you all know where that is?
Yes.
Okay. It's, okay. So...
The one we talked about last week.
Yes.
Yes.
So that's happening. Then there's a discussion, there was discussion on a ninety-foot baseball field application. We put that on hold because they haven't figured out where they want to foot it, much less...
Can you still walk Border Street?
Oh, really? So, and there was that. Then the Teak Sherman Community Garden, they want forty-one thousand five hundred dollars for a fence and take down some trees.
Isn't that like ten people to five of them?
Hey, and then fix... And repair the bridge.
What is it?
The bridge. They have a bridge. But they were told they could not, CPC would not fund a weed whacker.
Oh.
Couldn't do that, okay? No weed whackers.
No weed whackers.
Then there was a big go-around on the historic preservation of Gaelic English journal for twenty-one, two thousand four hundred dollars from the Historical Society.
Oh, yeah.
And this was some, some character that came from Ireland and his name was O'Keefe, and who was he? And he had this journal and some of it's in Gaelic and some of it's in English and the money to preserve it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's been sort of kind of put off because everybody was in a kind of twist. And then we had the Bailey Ellis House restoration, eight thousand dollars. And this has to do with water running into the basement and they're doing some type of something to prevent the water, it'll just go through and out.
Where is that house?
The Bailey Ellis House?
Oh, the, my house, okay.
Yeah, right. And that was voted, so we're gonna do that. And then I went to do the selectmen's meeting Tuesday night.
Yep.
And Paul Maribito was there and made a presentation about the lots that we've formatted out on Chief Justice Pushing Highway. And he wants to connect four units to the pipe that's in the private way that goes into the high school. And there was discussion about that, the fact that it's private, that they have to talk to the school, et cetera, et cetera. And I felt very strongly that this, that this should not be approved because North Situate needs sewer, et cetera. And it degenerated into the fact that finally came to the realization that Tony Vignani is selling sewer hookups.
Can you say that again?
Vignani is selling sewer hookups. He feels that we need to sell thirty sewer hookups a year to fund the Sewer Enterprise Fund. He said that.
He tied that all in together, that we need to make sure we have all the sewers and we have enough money to make sure that our enterprise fund works.
That's right, which makes, doesn't pass the straight face test. At any rate, they put that off, so we'll see what happens. I, I just think that it's a humongous mistake. These are four brand-new hookups. They could do septic and they could do it well, but of course, Maribito, we have to clear cut and then you're gonna be able to see the houses from the school and da-da-da-da-da, you know, as he often does. So we'll see what happens with that, but I'm really opposed to these four new hookups.
So you don't want to select anybody here?
What?
You go in front of the selectmen?
Because they are the sewer commissioners.
They get denied from DPW, so DPW, then they go to sewer commissioners after that.
So that was...
It seems like tail wagging the dog to say...
These are new homes, not people that we have existing homes.
It's a fund of funds.
These are new hookups.
Brand-new.
Brand-new.
New houses.
Don't exist yet. Don't exist.
Elevated?
Huh?
Elevated, yes. We will elevate, don't ya?
Okay, so there's that, and all right, that's all I have, and plan it.
All right, so I told you a little bit about what's gonna happen on September ninth. Drew is progressing. They've, you know, been, I think I sent you their report from this week?
Yeah.
Just so you could see some of the stuff that's, that's going on there.
That's good.
I think that they are going to be looking to do a sign with a rendering of a project on it, too, and supposedly they're gonna have a, having some type of groundbreaking in September. The walk at Seaside at Situate today was quite lengthy. We were out there for two hours, so we walked quite a bit of the site.
Brought water.
We, most people brought water, but we melted. But I will be meeting, setting up a meeting for landscaping because I still get my fifty trees and we're gonna use them. I, we got the project eligibility letter for Oloken Bucket. I will send it out to you tomorrow, but that came in late yesterday and, of course, they got approval.
They did?
But subject to, you know, certain things have to be explored during the process.
For what project?
The cottages at Oloken Bucket.
Condos?
The cottages. Thirty-four, thirty-four units off of Oloken Bucket that...
Another forty-three projects, chief.
Oh, I guess I'm not familiar with that one, so.
Yeah, I mean, we did, we made some comments on it and, you know, and, you know, what, but that one came, state approved that.
It's in the mush.
So. Otherwise, we remain pretty busy and, you know, we, you know, we're getting, I'm getting caught up on, you know, trying to get ass built on some of the stormwater permits and issuing certificates of completion, you know, and trying to, at some point, work on reviving the stormwater rigs. But we have word that a couple projects, a couple big projects are gonna be coming in. So we'll just have to wait and see.
Do you know what they are?
Well, we've been told seven new Drifways coming in.
Oh, okay, and?
And at some...
Is that the one at the Rotary?
Yes.
That's the one at the Rotary, and sometime in the near future, probably before the end of the year, seven McDonald Terrace. And so you have your new zoning bylaws, everybody? The yellow is your new one. That's up to date as far as we could get it. We still haven't heard back from the AG yet on the signs.
I think that's a start. All right, so that's...
That's where we are.
Busy.
We're busy.
Karen, thank you for everything, really. And Shari as well. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done.
Thank you.
That was really efficient. That was good. Moved in second.